Everyone's here? Carly? Yeah, Carly? You're muted.
Yep, what do you need, Marge? Hello?
They're gonna come back at seven and get you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. I'm sorry that it was so last minute.
No worries.
All right. So everybody's here?
We have the majority of everyone, but...
We're missing Erin.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can let her know where we're at.
She knows where we are because she got her picture taken. She's... Maybe she didn't go to the right room.
I think we've missed Karen too, haven't we?
No, Karen just came in. Maybe we should just email her to... maybe we should go into executive session and send her a text telling her to just... She's in.
She's here.
All right.
Oh, and Tara just came in too.
All right, there I see you. I see you. All right. You're welcome.
Is this superintendent coming in? Do you see him?
Yep.
Yes, he just joined.
Okay, good.
All right. Time is tight for this executive session, so...
Chairperson McBride, I think everyone's here.
Okay, let's open the meeting. And I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved?
Second.
All right, we're going into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42-46 just... -dash five A for discussion of the following: job performance and upcoming negotiations, contracts, and legal advice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. I'll see you all in executive session. You have the... The meeting numbers, right? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the meeting. Would you all rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty, justice, and freedom of speech.
Mr. Hewitt, I see your hand is raised and I will recognize you when we get to public comment. Tonight, it's my privilege to present some accolades. Are you ready, Vic? You have to unmute.
On behalf of the school committee and Superintendent Bryce, we would like to congratulate the H of the KMS Solve Tomorrow team on your selection as a national semifinalist in the Solve Tomorrow competition. Teacher-coaches, Mrs. Patricia Filippino and Mrs. Mary Cabral worked collaboratively with four pods of students at both Mount Hope High School and Kickamue Middle School, who went to the Solve Tomorrow competition sponsored by Samsung. The teachers are all proud of all the students who participated in both schools. The KMS pod won the first round of the competition by submitting the best problem-solution proposal in December. Over 2,000 projects were submitted nationwide. KMS's proposal has won $15,000 in school supplies and technology and is the only school in Rhode Island to make it into Round Two. Students will design and build their solutions and submit a documentary of their project to a virtual panel in March. Seventy-five schools from across the nation are competing to be selected as one of the top ten problem-solving schools in the nation. We are excited to announce the KMS students who represent Rhode Island in Round Two are below. The teacher-coaches, Mary Cabral and Patricia Filippino. The Mount Hope High School student mentors, Alice Grantham and Christiana Cabral. The KMS students, Charlotte Arsenal, Hazel Bradley, Marissa Cabral, Samantha Campbell, Ellie Donovan, Elizabeth Dunlop, Christina Marion, Lily Parisi, Regina Reich, Sarah Sheik, Avery Walsh, Eliza White, Lucy O'Brien, Luke Daniel, and Jacob Beatrice. All right.
Bravo, everybody. Congratulations. This is really something to be proud of, both for yourself and for your school. And I would say that probably Dr. Bryce has something to say about this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have the team-winning proposal, if you want me to read that. I don't know.
Yes, please.
You want me to read that?
Yes, please.
The KMS Solve Tomorrow team's winning proposal, Kickamue Middle School students will use STEM to give the ocean state a solution for the ever-rising number of rip current threats reported on area beaches and stop the tragic loss of lives experienced this summer. According to the National Weather Service, surf zone fatalities caused by hazards such as waves and current account for 52 deaths nationwide. And in 2020, a STEM solution to rescue people from dangerous undertows and warn beach goes is imperative. Swimmers, both young and old, are at risk with swimming on Rhode Island beaches. Locally, news reports of rip currents broke records this year. Our teacher lost a former seventh-grade student eight years ago as the 11-year-old attempted to free her younger cousin from the undertow. The 2020 beach season in Rhode Island began as a retired gentleman from South County drowned in a riptide. Within a mile of KMS student homes, two of five brothers became trapped by a rip current. Their father immediately swam in to rescue them and save the boys, but became a victim of the rip current himself. We will conduct research to understand the scientific cause of rip currents and engineer a solution that will save lives on Rhode Island shores. Students will use scientific research from the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration and the National Weather Association to understand the causes and the way in which a riptide current occurs. We will engineer a prototype solution that might warn and rescue swimmers who become trapped in an undertow. The Solve Tomorrow KMS team will share the design with school committee members at the conclusion of Round Two. If the Solve Tomorrow judges are impressed with our solution, the winnings will be increased to $65,000 for school technology and classroom supplies. Students who win the next round become national STEM finalists in 2021. Thank you.
Amazing. Dr. Bryce?
Yes, so thank you, Mrs. McBride. So first of all, can we just give our students another round of applause? We are absolutely just so very proud of the work that our young scientists and engineers at KMS are doing. And I actually wrote myself a quick note, right? So we always talk about real-world solutions. And so what our young people are doing is they're going to engineer and create real-world solutions to a real-world problem that is actually impacting lives and impacts so much of us because we live in an area with so much coastline and so many beaches. We are absolutely proud of the work that they have done thus far, getting to this stage. And we know and we look forward to seeing the great solution that they come up with. The other thing that I might add, and I wonder if Dr. Santa would also join me in this, is the connection to real-world solutions seems like we are building engineers that might want to think about becoming members of our CTE program once they get to high school next year. I don't know, Dr. Santa?
Absolutely. This is a great experience for students to feel what it likes, what it is like to be an engineer. So I thank you for working on really challenging problems and being innovative and coming up with solutions that obviously people have not thought of yet. So that's the beauty of being an engineer. You get to think of solutions that aren't here for us yet. So continue with the great work. I hope that you enjoy the STEM programs that we have at the middle school and that you get your eyes open to the engineering program that we have at the high school. So thank you all for your work and to our teachers for inspiring our students. I know how many hours you put in supporting them and helping them, and I think it's a wonderful program. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Santa. Dr. Bryce? Ah, he's muted. Okay. Children, you just, you just never cease to amaze me. And I'm really proud to be a part of your community and thank you very much for representing us. All right, now we're moving on to public comment. Mr. Hewitt has his hand up. Yes, Mr. Hewitt? Peter, I don't know if you're muted or not. You're muted, Peter. Mr. Hewitt, you're still muted.
Oh, I know. Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, I can, Mr. Hewitt.
All right. Well, listen, I understand the public comment is limited to 15 minutes, so let me proceed. I have actually several questions to ask or inquire about. If you decide that there are many people lining up to speak and you want to cut me off, feel free to do so.
Still here? I could really do that?
But, Mike, it's three limits, three minutes per individual.
Three minutes. Go ahead, Peter.
First question, President Biden has reported to have reversed President Trump's executive order related to transgender rights, which will mandate transgender females, in addition to having other rights and privileges, will also be allowed to engage in female sports. What will be the policy of Bristol Warren Schools on having biological males but transgender females participate in girls' sports? And will the school committee members have any substantive input on this decision? That's question number one. Question two, I believe in a recent meeting of the school committee or subcommittee on curriculum, mention was made of two new courses. One was on the subject of diversity. As best I recall, that course was to consist of four modules. How would I or any other member of the public go about obtaining more detailed information on what materials make up the four modules? And would copies of that material be made available to the parents? Question three, how would anybody go about obtaining copies or a listing of the supplementary materials the English teacher has used or intends to use when having her students read the classic novel, The Catcher in the Rye, to educate her students on the concept of privilege? That I understand was the findings, that I understand was the finding of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee that met last summer to implement this curriculum change or addition, which also has the support of Superintendent Bryce. Those are my three questions, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Hewitt, none of those questions are on our agenda, so that I cannot respond to you with answers. All I can say to you is that you are more than welcome to contact Dr. Santa, our acting superintendent, with those questions. And she will get back to you with, with the best that she can with the answers that she has.
Now, who now is the acting superintendent and why is she acting?
Because Dr. Bryce is on family medical leave. He hasn't gone away. He's still our superintendent, but he's in Maryland for now.
I got you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have public comment? I don't see anybody. So let's move on to the, to the motion to seal the executive session minutes of January 25th.
We seal the executive session minutes.
I need a second. Second by Karen Cabral, in favor? The ayes have it. All right, the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the January 11th school committee virtual meeting and approval of one homeschool request for the 2020-21 school year.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second.
Discussion. I never, I'm just going to say it again because I say it every year. I never approve a homeschooling request after January. So, and I can do that. It won't mean anything, but at least it's how I feel. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Me. The ayes have it. All right, now we're going to go into discussion and action. All of you received the Mount Hope High School Program of Studies. High School Program of Studies with the the list of the changes that were made since the last time we saw that. So I need a motion to accept the Mount Hope High School Program of Studies. That motion does not mean that you want to accept it. It simply means that we need a motion and a second in order to discuss it.
So moved?
Second.
All right, discussion. Do you want to present to us, Dr. DiBiase, what the changes are?
Um, Mrs. King, did you want to chime in?
Sure.
In front of you. Awesome.
I had shared a document with Dr. Santa. I thought school committee members did get that. The edits that were made were all edits discussed at our last meeting. Edits include adding, I I don't have the document in front of me, but out what we did is the construction, architecture and construction, CTE pathway, the courses, the course names had changed, so there was some confusion. We added formerly known as said differently, but you know, so that the previous course name is there, so there's less confusion. We changed and removed the course level description table. There was some discussion about the college preparatory level and it's it's the language college preparatory that it did not necessarily indicate college and career. So we have removed that table. We continue to describe our honors and AP courses because they are set apart from our standard courses, but we've done a different setup and you'll notice that. Um, let's see where that is. That is.
College and career.
On page six, we now describe honors courses and advanced placement courses. And in places in the program where it referenced college prep, it now will say college and career preparatory. So we added the career in so that that's reflected in a few places. There was some inconsistencies with courses that were in course description, but not in the department table and vice versa. We made corrections so that there is consistency there now. So if the course was in the table, it's now in the course description list and vice versa. There was a typo in the French one that's been corrected.
I do have the list in front of me now, Mrs. King.
Okay, yeah, I just for some reason, my, I can't get out of the full screen to to get to my document, so.
No, no worries. The AP macroeconomics course description.
That was, yeah, that was one. It was in the, it was in the table, but it wasn't a course description in the catalog, so that's been added in.
Uh, the changes that were made to the last page to remove names of the Oliver administration that was taken care of.
Yep.
Um, the added the language formerly known as to the newly named construction courses to decrease confusion.
Yep. We added. And what I would like to mention on that is what I did notice is I made those corrections in the technology area, but I did not make the correction and add formally in the CTE section. So I have a new PDF ready to go that has that in both places now, so it is consistent and I apologize for that.
Also, we added research AP to the English table.
Yep.
And then, Mrs. King, I think you described this already. We added the description for the honors courses and AP to follow class rank in page six and change that description. You mentioned that that one already. We included the career and capstone course description in the business and finance CTE section. And then finally, we will be creating courses in Aspen for accounting and filmmaking. Course numbers will be added before it goes to print. And I think that should wrap it up.
Yeah, that covers it.
Does anybody have any questions on the on the changes that were made as a result of the workshop? Seeing none, then I'd like to move this and have a vote. All in favor of accepting the Mount Hope High School Program of Studies, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Marge, I actually had, I actually had a question, but I was muted.
Oh, I'm sorry to.
But it wasn't a question. It wasn't a question on the changes. It was actually another question.
Well, that, we're voting on the changes right now.
All right, okay, perfect. Thank you.
All in favor? Yes. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, ladies, for bringing that to us. And thank you for all your staff. Their hard work and I hope that we have a great year and that everyone gets to take what they want to take. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Of course. And thank you for sending just the one page. Um, I see Laura Cabral here and.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Dr. Bryce. Go ahead.
I just want to thank Dr. DiBiase, Michelle King, Rob Hanlon, Nicole Lyons, all of the other staff at Mount Hope for all the work that they've done in and just continuing to make the program of study a really concise document that lays out the full range of possibilities for our young people. So thank you very much.
Tara.
So I, I apologize. I wanted to ask this before the program of studies. I wanted to ask about the at-risk students especially. So the students that we pulled from the EPCAP program. And what are the, I didn't see anything in the program of studies that addressed specific needs that they have. The other question is, and I think I asked, I'm not sure where I asked this, but East Providence VOTEC, there's no mention of the VOTEC programs that our children, our students are eligible for. So I'm curious on how that information is sent out. I know years ago, and I'm dating myself, East Providence used to come to the middle school and do a presentation for students. I know that that hasn't been the case in the last couple of years, but I want to find out where we are in that process because they offer a number of CTE programs that Mount Hope does not and that they may actually be relevant to some of these at-risk students. And then my last question is, when and where will this program of study be available? Will it be available to parents online? Will you be putting it on the website? When should they expect it?
Just a second, Michelle. Tara, two of the questions that you asked really aren't covered by the agenda, but I think that they're interesting enough questions that we can direct them to Dr. Santa or to direct to the high school and let us all know what the answers to those questions are. In terms of the third one, Michelle, when will the program of studies be ready or be dispersed to the community?
So now that we have, it's been adopted and approved as of tonight. It is going to be sent to printer tomorrow. I'm told I have a week turnaround time to get it in hand printed. We will then be providing hard copies to students through presentations, which will probably start the second week in February. It will be available immediately on the website in digital PDF form, which will be the high school website. It can go on the district website too, but typically the high school website under the school counseling department. There's a program of studies option in that in the department. So we will, we'll be updating that as soon as, as soon as possible, probably tomorrow.
And then we'll also be sending it out via email in our weekly newsletters so that families will have the link within the newsletters and, you know, also through our whole mass communication system. So we'll use all of, we'll use all of our various modes of communication to get, to get it out there.
All right, thanks. Tara, the questions that you asked, I think are important enough. Could you send them to Dr. Santa? And Jill, take a look at them and then we'll, we'll all get answers to them? Please?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. The next thing on the agenda is the School Committee Legal Services contract. Every three years, we go out for a new contract and and this year we have chosen to stay with the firm of Hennessy Lombardo and Carol, or Hennessy, Carol and Lombardo. I'm not sure what the the words are. So I need a motion to enter into that contract with, for legal services.
Motion. Two moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, Mary Ann, at the budget meeting, we had a conversation just, you were going to check into how many hours you think on average per month and you bill us currently? And I also think it's important to tell the committee about any changes that are in this contract from last year.
Yes, um, thank you. Um, I don't, again, I apologize. I told you I would get you that information. I will get you that information about hours. As you know, it changes every, every month. Um, in terms of any changes from what was provided to the committee three years ago, I think it's over three years ago now. It's about three and a half. Three and a half years ago, the rate, some of the items were at 175 an hour. Some of them were at 160. Everything has gone up to 175. Now, special ed, litigation, things like that were always at 175. General was at 160. That's gone up to 175. So the only change is that some of the categories that were at 160 have gone up to 175. There's been no other increases and no other changes.
Seeing no other questions? I'd like to vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Mary Ann, please thank the people at your firm. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Dr. Santa, you'll make sure that that contract is executed and signed and sealed and delivered and all of that stuff?
Yes, I will. Yep.
All right. Thanks. See, which is the SBA COVID-19 grant. I confess, I'm not sure who wants to speak to that. Dr. Bryce, Dr. Santa? Anybody?
I can, if you need it. Go ahead, Jonathan, you want me to do it?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so this is money that is approved by the Department of Education that will come into the district. The Bristol Warren is getting $56,868. In one of the things that Mary King did, she was reviewing the grants and realized that we needed school committee approval for this grant. So that's why it's in front of you tonight. This would be used for any COVID-related expenses. You don't need to do anything for it except sign your name, approve it, and we get $656,000 that can be spent until August on, again, COVID-related expenses. So that's why this is on the agenda for this evening. The one thing I want to mention is that the Department of Ed is very difficult with signatures. And as I discussed with Dr. Santa today, we're going to need all members of the school committee to sign this grant, or at least the majority, so that it can be approved. The signed grant needs to be into the Department of Ed no later than February 15th. They will take separately signed sheets. So if you either can't go into the office or you can't sign and scan, we can, we can get you separate copies and we'll just send in nine copies if we have to.
Any questions? Erin?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a question for Mary Ann, based on you taking the lead on this. Mary Ann, at the moment. I noticed in the beginning of the memo on this, it mentioned the statewide school construction project. I'm not sure if I have that exactly right. Does that ring a bell from FY 2019?
You have, it, it's actually money that was allocated district by district, but it was specifically designated for COVID. They took money out of that to give us for COVID-related expenses. And I believe in your background, Kate, Dr. Bryce, Kate sent kind of the background as to what every district was getting as part of this grant. This actually came out in November.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get clarification on. It is a portion of that money that has come out to be used for these COVID-related expenses? Or?
Yes.
Jonathan.
Sorry. So just to clarify, and I'm actually looking at the the document as part of the $250 million statewide school construction bond. They have taken $4 million and divided it across school districts in the state and our share was 56,000, as Mary Ann Carroll has already mentioned. And all that we need in order for us to be able to pull down those funds to use them for some of the COVID-related expenses is have the approval and signatures of all of the the members of the school committee.
Thank you. That makes things much clearer for me. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Then I need a motion to accept the grant and.
To accept the grant.
Second by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
So everybody needs to get down to Oliver or send in their signature. And we're gonna, we're gonna chase you down after a week. How's that? That should, that should be enough time for everybody to get there. Thank you.
Marge, I'm sorry. Should they go to Kate or who should we send those to?
Diane.
Diane.
Go to Diane and Julie.
Go to Diane because I don't necessarily, yeah.
Send them to me. And if anyone would like to come in to Oliver to sign, we're happy to do that as well.
All right, I'm going to veer for a minute. I see Laura's here. Laura Cabral. She doesn't have her hand up, but I don't know if she needs to take any more pictures or not. Lauren, are you all set?
I can stay on until the end of the meeting when it's adjourned.
Okay, all right, thanks. Right, the next thing on our on our discussion in action is extension of the services for the financial consultant. Dr. Bryce, you want to entertain that or?
Yes. So actually, the, what I would say is that the consultant that has come in to help us has been very important in helping us to find efficiencies, to make sure that all of the funds are in the buckets that they need to be in. But we also know that the individual has experience in in looking at resumes and helping us to interview for the chief financial officer position. And so we are coming to you asking for an extension of her services that will allow us to make those hires.
And the extension of that services would be the same length as we hired her for in the first place?
That would be correct.
Anybody else? So moved by Mr. Cabral. Do I have a second? Second by Tara. Do I have questions? Yes, Sheila.
Since I was going to second.
Oh, all right. Does anybody have any questions about that? She really is working out well for you. Yes, everybody? Great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The next thing on our agenda is a notification of the appointment of a school committee clerk. Dr. Bryce?
Yes, ma'am. And so it is my pleasure to let the school committee know. And I'm actually going to have Dr. Santa give the details, but that we've gone through a process where we have posted a position at, for a confidential school secretary. We've gone through an interview process where a number of individuals applied, were interviewed by the interview team and the selection was made. So I would have Dr. Santa just provide information about the the candidate and what her name is and how many hours per week we expect that she's going to work.
Absolutely. We are happy to announce the appointment of Diane Campbell. She's formerly a member of the school committee several years ago. She has extensive background on school committee procedures. And also she's quite. extensive background on school committee procedures. And also she's quite proficient with technology, which for anyone who has watched Kate Brown do Zoom meetings and postings and everything like that, it does take a strong technology skill. She has excellent communication skills and I know that she will be an asset to the process in working for Dr. Bryce and assisting the school committee members. She will receive a rate of pay of $26 per hour and we anticipate that she will work up to 40 hours per month. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I've forgotten, but we look forward to working with her and I believe that she will be starting this week.
Thank you. Anybody? Thank you very much. It'll be a, it'll, it'll be nice to have our, our own secretary back again and take some of the pressure off of Kate. So, thank you.
Marge, does she have a contract and do we have to vote on that?
She doesn't. I'm sorry.
She's an at will? No, go ahead, Dr.
Yes, so Mr. Cabral, she actually does not have a contract. She actually is a part-time employee of the district that I have detailed to serve as the confidential secretary to the school committee. And so she will go through our normal hiring process as a part-time employee.
And, and she, she gets a salary but no benefits. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. At the end of this, I have a budget update. And that, that was sort of a safety line. If there was anything you wanted to say about the budget at this time, I was giving you the opportunity to do that.
Yes, ma'am. So the one thing in your packets and we'd actually like to, I don't know if Ryan or Rose could actually put up the BWRST proposed FY 22 budget timeline. We have made some changes to that timeline based on feedback from the school, we received from the school committee at our workshop. We have put specific deadlines for when schools will receive their preliminary budget, when that budget is due. We've known that internally, but, but this is a good worksheet that will support us, the district moving forward into next school year when we will have to do this again. So that is the key update. We've also added new meetings. The Joint Finance Committee would like to hold an initial meeting on February the 4th. So we've added that into the timeline as well. And then we have all the details about the key milestones built into the budget process that include when the budget will be first presented to the Budget and Facility Subcommittee. We expect that to be somewhere around February the 3rd or before February the 3rd. And then if you scroll up, Ryan, thank you. Right, so in, hold right there. And between February the 3rd and February the 22nd, the Budget and Facility Subcommittee will work with the budget. We expect that we will bring that budget document to the full school committee on February the 26th for approval prior to the March 1st date, which is the date that is built into Policy DB. We'll transmit that over to both Bristol and Warrentown Halls. And then in March, we actually will spend our time working with the Joint Finance Committee, holding hearings and that we expect that, that the budget will be approved by the Joint Finance Committee within 30 days of receipt. So we're really talking about the end of March. And just a couple of other dates that are important. We also know that by May the 10th, the CFO will notify the town treasurers of their proportional share. How much is Bristol's share? How much is Warren's share? By June 30th, the school committee will vote to approve an FY 2022 budget. Here is two caveats. The first caveat is that, given all of the issues related to COVID, it is possible that there may not be clear information about the, the state, state portion that they provide to school districts. And so that is something that we are going to closely monitor. The second thing that we also have to prepare for is whether or not the, the state portion will be available prior to that June 30th date. And if not, we may find ourselves, as every other school system would be, where the preliminary budget approval may have to go into July, if not early August. And so I just think it's important for school committee members and the broader community to know that we are monitoring that information and we look forward to receiving it as soon as possible. But we certainly do not believe that the state is operating on the traditional timeline that they've always operated on. So thank you, thank you for showing, presenting that, Ryan. Any questions?
I have a question. If we're not really sure whether we're going to be ready with a budget by February 3rd, what is the purpose of the, and I'm not trying to cast aspersions on anybody. I just want to know what the purpose is of the Joint Finance Committee meeting, if we really have nothing to tell them at that point?
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, it, it's actually a great question.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just want to know, what, what are we meeting for? If, yeah.
So again, we are monitoring on a daily basis to see if preliminary numbers from the state will be provided. And so our, our temporary CFO, along with Joel Harrington, are looking to, to make sure that we're getting those numbers as quickly as possible. But again, everything is delayed and that is why Mrs. Ellsworth and I, along with Diane Santa, Dr. Santa, we've built in a number of different meetings because those different meetings will provide us with an opportunity to modify the budget based on incoming information. We hope to have, at, at a minimum, a placeholder for the state share by February the 3rd. And if we can get that, we will certainly add that to the budget. We are also, in my preliminary, preliminary conversations with Diane Brennan, we have talked about showing three things. We've talked about showing a general operating ledger. We've talked about showing expenditures. And we've also talked about showing federal grants. And so that will be something that will be new for the school committee members, the budget subcommittee, as well as the broader community. So those three areas of budget preparation, so people will have a sense of, of what we expect next year for FY 22. The other thing that we probably need to prepare for, and we keep hearing this number that the state has a deficit for FY 22. We are not sure what that deficit is. When we are on RISA calls, I was on a Chamber of Commerce call on this past Friday and we certainly expect that there is, is likely to be some decrease in potential state funding unless a new stimulus package is passed. And so that's something that we have to work for.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? No? All right, then thank you. Thank you very much. Now I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, but I don't want you to go anywhere because Mrs. Cabral is still on the, on the line about pictures. So I, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, motion adjourned.
A second, Tara? Yes, Tara? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We're staying on however, because we've been having our pictures taken tonight for the high school yearbook and Mrs. Cabral has been facilitating that and we told her to come back at the end of the meeting and let us know if she got everything okay. Plus she missed one individual, so. I don't, Laura, I see you, but you're muted.
I'm here.
Okay. So we're ready for you if you have something you need.
Sure. Carly, if you wouldn't mind, you're the, the photo that we need. So what we'll do is I'll spotlight you so that you fill up my whole screen and then I'll give you on a three count and then I'll take the screenshot.
Thank you.
So can the rest of us go?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a great night. Good night, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, all.